Welcome to this Annual Meeting of the Public Council, the 2022 municipal council. Town councils are now in order, all the council members and the reporters are going to the town council meeting. I don't think that's basically what you want your board to be able to report for this purpose. The Plenary meetings for council involve a town forum, which is an opportunity for the members of the public to pose any questions they may have to the council. This is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Do any members of the public in attendance have a question they would like to ask? The absence of any questions from members of the public will prevent the meeting. Item number one is the election of town mayor. First, my role as a town mayor for the last municipal year to chair this meeting until the election is elected. Can I please ask for, I've got two, do my words from my last year, just a few words about my last year to say. It's been an exciting and rewarding time. One of the nicest things was having the opportunity to talk and to listen to people and children. So while not being political in any way, just trying to be a person, talk as a wookiee residence. Being a town mayor has given me the opportunity to see just how many volunteer organisations there are. It's humbling to see the level of devotion and hard work that volunteers provide. They truly keep the world's turn in this community. Looking back on this year, twenty-six events I attended, man, the town council offices, that's right. For your help and cheerful support, I couldn't have done it without you. And thank you Deputy Mayor Councilor Kate Gilder, for your help with attending many events that I couldn't go to. And just lastly, can I thank you folks, Councilors, for giving me this opportunity. It really has been a honor. So to continue, can I ask for nominations for the position of town mayor for 2022-23 municipal year? Councilor John.
Thank you. I'll come up, because as you know, my voice isn't turned, and I'm going to turn it round. Right, because Madam Mayor, I'd just like to thank you on behalf of the Lib Dem group for the way that you have managed the meetings, your integrity, your patience. And I hope that you'll pass on some of that expertise to the next incumbent. Although I know now that we had training facilities for our chairmen, so, but thank you very much. We do appreciate what you've done.
Councilor John, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
It's easy to keep the whole thing up, isn't it?
You're welcome.
Can I say?
I nominate councillor Janet Starrell.
Do you read them, please?
Yes, I second it.
Can you please then move to vote? Can all those in favour please raise their hands?
That's fourteen-four.
Can all those against please raise their hands?
No against.
Can all those wishing to abstain please raise their hands?
Six extensions.
Excellent. So in that case, I can confirm that I have been duly elected for the position of town mayor for 2022-23 municipal year. Thank you. So I can keep on this for saying? So again, further thanks to the members of the public. I'm proud of my to be elected to be town mayor for the second year. I'd like to thank my fellow councillors for giving me the opportunity to serve them. This is an ever-changing mode of living, so I'll consider it a success if in some small ways I can bring some cheer and optimism to events. Of course, I would like the pleasure of chairing the council meetings again. I'm sure they could be as interesting as always. But we just want to make sure all town councils are there too. And shall we be grateful and show them respect? Because we all gather in our time for the same objective, which is to serve the wookiee community. My change of charity will be keep mobile, relatively flexible. They're facing rising costs for maintenance and fuel to keep the vehicles on their own. I have their twenty-twenty-one day of the board, and everyone who likes it here. And just to say, I will sign the declaration of acceptance of all this as soon as possible following this meeting. Thank you. So we move on to item three. The next item on the agenda is apologies. So have we received any apologies for access tonight?
Yes, we have two apologies, councillors Doyle and Forre.
Please move on. Item four, the next item is the declarations of interest. Can we have any declarations of interest for councillors regarding any items on tonight's agenda? The next item on the agenda is to be the deputy town mayor for what came over this year. Can I please ask for nominations for the position of deputy town mayor for 2022-23 municipal year? Councilor Baker.
I nominate councillor Craig Gilder.
Thank you. And a second?
I second.
Members' nominations. So can we please move to a vote? Can all those in favour please raise their hands?
That's fourteen-four.
Can all those against please raise their hands?
No against.
And all those wishing to abstain, please raise their hands?
Six extensions.
In that case, I can confirm that councillor Gilder has been duly elected for the position of deputy town mayor for 2022-23 year. The next item on the agenda is to nominate the appointment of the leader and deputy leader of each of the municipal groups which make up the council for 2022-23 municipal year. The reference to these groups are probably the Conservative group, Liberal Democrat group, and the Labour Independent group. Firstly, can I please ask a member of the Conservative group to confirm the name of the leader and deputy leader?
I can confirm that I am the leader, and councillor Shirley Brown is the deputy leader.
You're so famous.
Yes, same as last year.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, last year was councillor Chen was leader?
No, I was chairman.
Chairman. I was the leader.
Of the council?
You lead.
Correct. Thank you for giving me that straight, Mary. It is councillor Chen.
Thank you. Yeah, councillor Chen and councillor Brinkley.
Sorry, sorry. Sorry, can I, I should look at the description, shouldn't I? Leader is councillor Chen. Deputy leader is councillor Brinkley. Exactly as last year.
So can I please now simply ask for one of the Liberal Democrat groups to confirm the name of their leader and deputy leader, please?
I hope I get this right. Same as last time, Madam Chairman, it's myself as leader and Beth Rowland as deputy leader.
Thank you. I then can please ask a member of the Labour Independent group to confirm the name of the leader and deputy leader?
Narda Alson-Jari for leader, and Martin Doyle for deputy.
Thank you. And these appointments have been mentioned.
Oh, sorry, can I just ask, just on the agenda, just to make sure that when we write up the minutes, that it's written as the Labour Independent group?
Oh, that's my apologies. That's a cover from last year, so I know apologies, it is the Labour Independent group.
Did I forget?
No, I just.
You've read it out correctly.
Yeah.
So the next item on the agenda is to be the deputy town mayor, aren't we?
Now, I'll tell you.
So can I please ask for nominations for the leader and deputy leader of the council? So can I have nominations for the position of leader?
And I propose councillor Baker for leader of the council.
Thank you. And a second? Thank you councillor John. So can we please move to a vote? Can all those in favour please raise their hands?
That's fourteen-four.
Can all those against please raise their hands?
No against.
And can all those wishing to abstain, please raise their hands?
That's six.
In that case, I confirm that councillor Baker has been duly elected for the position of leader of the council for 2022-23 municipal year. Secondly, can I please ask for nominations for the position of deputy leader of the council for 2022-23 municipal year? Councillor Baker?
I get this one right now. Councillor Charlie Brinkley.
Thank you. And a second? Councillor Chen. After we say that's the next. Thank you. So can we please move to a vote? Can all those in favour please raise their hands?
Fourteen-four.
Can all those against please raise their hands?
No against.
Can all those wishing to abstain please raise their hands?
Six against. Oh, sorry, extensions. Six extensions.
In that case, I can confirm that councillor Baker has been duly elected for the position of deputy leader of the council for 2022-23 municipal year. Next item on the agenda is to appoint members to serve on standard committees for 2022-23. In order to succeed, the council must first approve the terms of reference for each of the standard committees, which includes the number of places to appoint to on each committee. The terms of reference are provided in Appendix eight, which is included on page one of the appendix. And a table showing the current number of places or division of those places on each standard committee is included on page one of the appendix. So the first matter to approve is the terms of reference for the Strategy and Resources Committee, which includes provision for nine members to be appointed to the committee. The terms of reference are included on page two of Appendix eight. Then we do a name search and we will divide the terms of reference for the proposed number of places. So can I please ask for a proposal? That's the paper. And a second? Okay, let's move to a vote again. So can all those in favour please raise their hands?
It's eighteen-four.
Can all those against please raise their hands?
Nine against.
Can all those wishing to abstain please raise their hands?
Two extensions.
So I can confirm that the terms of reference for the Strategy and Resources Committee have been approved. So can I now please ask for the names of the members to be appointed to the committee by each municipal group? Firstly, can I have the names of the six Conservative group members?
Madam Chairman, I have provided full details for our nominations for all committees. To Matthew, so unless people want to hear, they've already got it.
I'm happy to briefly read them out. So the group nominating appointments to be scheduled for the Services Committee are councillor Baker, Brinkley, Anderson, Chadwick, Lewis and Wicks.
Secondly, can I please have the names of the two Liberal Democrat group members?
Yes, it's myself and Beth Rowland.
Thank you. Can I please have the name of the Labour Independent group member?
Can we defer that, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you. These appointments have been made. Next, we need to approve the terms of reference for the Leisure Services Committee, which again includes provision for nine members to be appointed to the committee, and these are included on page five of Appendix eight. Do any members have any queries regarding the terms of reference for the proposed number of places? Can I please ask for a note of?
I would, I would vote.
I'll say.
So we will move to a vote. Can all those in favour please raise their hands?
It's eighteen-four.
Can all those against please raise their hands?
It's no against.
And can all those wishing to abstain please raise their hands?
Two extensions.
In that case, I can confirm that the terms of reference for the Leisure Services Committee have been approved. Can I now please ask for the names of the members to be appointed to the committee by each municipal group? Firstly, can I please have the names of the six Conservative group members?
So the councillors appointed to the group are councillors Bragg, Smith, Horstkins, Gilder, Swaddle and Lewis.
Can I please have the names of the two Liberal Democrat group members, please?
Yes, it's Alex Heath and myself.
I then can please have the name of the Labour Independent group member?
It'll be myself.
Yeah? Thank you. These appointments have been made. I then need to approve the terms of reference for the Planning and Community Committee, which again includes provision for nine members to be appointed to the committee. These are included on page seven of Appendix eight. Any members have any queries regarding the terms of reference for proposed number of places? So can I please then ask for the proposer?
I would.
Anderson. So let's move to a vote. Can all those in favour please raise their hands?
That's eighteen-four.
Can all those against please raise their hands?
It's no against.
Can all those wishing to abstain please raise their hands?
No extensions.
In that case, I can confirm that the terms of reference for the Planning and Community Committee have been approved. Can I now please ask for the names of the members to be appointed to the committee by each municipal group? Firstly, can I please have the name of the six Conservative group members?
The members appointed are councillors Wicks, Chen, Bragg, Sartorl, Stone and Baker.
Thank you. Secondly, can I please have the names of the two Liberal Democrat group members?
Yeah, it's Richard Skeg and myself.
Thank you. Can I please have the name of the Labour Independent group member?
Councillor Nagro.
Yeah. Thank you. These appointments have been made. The next item on the agenda is to approve the terms of reference for future council's subcommittees, working partners and partnerships, and then to notify the members to each municipal group. Again, the terms of reference, including the proposed number of places, are included in Appendix eight. And you'll see a summary table showing the current division of places on Page ten of the appendix. As a reminder, in line with standing orders six point four A, six point one A and six point six A, only members of the respective pair of standing committees can approve the terms of reference for the working subcommittees, working parties and partnerships. Ask the committee officer to confirm the names of those eligible to vote on each and ask all other councillors to ensure they do not vote where they are not eligible. So firstly, we will review the subcommittees, working parties and partnerships for the Strategy and Resources Committee, it's the pair of committees. So Matthew, can you please first confirm the members of the Strategy and Resources Committee who are eligible to vote on these?
Yes, I will. The those eligible to vote on the Strategy and Resources Committee are, sorry, councillors Baker, Brinkley, Anderson, Chadwick, Lewis, Wicks, Jill, Rowland and that's it.
Oh, councillor John, sorry.
Madam Chairman, I wonder if it would be worth proposing that all of the approval of terms of reference are taken at once rather than as we go through? There doesn't seem to be anybody questioning that. They could obviously base that question, but could we take them on block?
Right, I would second that.
Okay, so we'll go through the proposed and seconders of each one, and then the end to include more, is that what you mean? Councillor Brown.
Just to wrap it up, we're on rules to say you can't do that. Now you want to do it. The only way you can do it under your own rules is to suspend the standing orders. Obviously, if you do.
In light of councillor McCann's comment, I think we should need to have to go through everyone individually.
Okay, we'll do that.
That's it.
So firstly, then we need to approve the terms of reference for the Investment Subcommittee. This can be found on page twelve of Appendix eight. The proposed number of places on this subcommittee is four. Does anybody have any queries? Can I please ask for a proposal, a second one? Councillor Brinkley is proposing, and councillor Bill's seconding. Okay. Can we please move to a vote? Can all those in favour please raise their hands?
This is just, remember, this is just for people on the Strategy and Resources Committee. That's seven-four.
Are any votes against on this committee?
No against.
And any extensions?
No.
So in that case, I can confirm the terms of reference of the Investment Subcommittee have been approved. So now can we now ask the names of the members to be appointed to the committee by each municipal group? Can I have the names of the three Conservative group members?
The Conservative members appointed to the group are councillors Baker, Brinkley and Anderson.
Thank you. Can I please have the names of the one Liberal Democrat group member?
Alex Heath.
Okay. Thank you. These appointments are made. Next, we need to approve the terms of reference for the Risk Management Subcommittee. These can be found on page thirteen of Appendix eight. The proposed number of places on this subcommittee is four. Any questions? Can I please ask for a proposal, a second one? The proposer?
I've not asked him.
I'm there. Thank you. Councillor Austin, have a second. Councillor Jill, thank you. Can we please move to a vote? Can all those in favour please raise their hands? Well, that was the second.
All of you, so we just go back, I believe, the proposal, the second, there has to be most committed to that, is that right? Yeah. So councillor Horstkins can't propose that, since it's not on the Strategy and Resources Committee.
So can we have a proposal, the ones on the Strategy and Resources Committee? And councillor Jill, seconded. So can we now move to a vote? Can all those in favour please raise their hands?
That's named four.
Can all those against? So everybody knows our sessions now. In that case, I can confirm that the terms of reference of the Risk Management Subcommittee have been approved. Can I now please ask for the names of the members to be appointed to the committee by each municipal group? Firstly, can I have the name of the three Conservative group members?
Yes, that's councillors Horstkins, Bragg and Green.
Thank you. Can I have the names of the one Liberal Democrat?
Beth Rowland.
Okay. Thank you. These appointments have been made. Next, we move on to approving the terms of reference for the Standing Orders and Financial Regulation Subcommittee. This can be found on page fourteen of Appendix eight. The proposed number of places on this subcommittee is four. Does anybody have any questions? Can I please ask for a proposal, a second one? Councillor Baker, councillor Rowland, thank you. Can I please move to a vote? Can all those in favour please raise their hands?
That's seven-four.
Can all those against?
None.
And all those abstaining?
No extensions.
In that case, I can confirm that the terms of reference for the Standing Orders and Financial Regulation Subcommittee have been approved. Can I now please ask for the names of the members to be appointed to the committee by each municipal group? Can I please have the names of the three Conservative group members?
It's councillors Baker, Swaddle and Bragg.
Thank you. Can I please have the name of the one Liberal Democrat?
Alex Heath.
Okay. These appointments have been made. Next, we move on to approving the terms of reference of the PR and Marketing Subcommittee. These can be found on page fifteen of Appendix eight. The proposed number of places on this subcommittee is four. Are there any questions? Can I please ask for a proposal? Councillor Baker, have a second, councillor Rowland, thank you. Can we please move to a vote? Can all those in favour please raise their hands?
That's four, that's eight-four.
So there's no against and no extensions. In that case, I can confirm that the terms of reference of the PR and Marketing Subcommittee have been approved. Can I now please ask for the names of the members to be appointed to the committee by each municipal group? Can I please have the names of the three Conservative group members?
Councillors Baker, Brinkley and Swaddle.
Thank you. Can I please have the names of the one Liberal Democrat?
Yes, as last time, Tom McCann.
Thank you. These appointments have been made. Next, we move on to approving the terms of reference of the Personnel Subcommittee. These can be found on page sixteen of Appendix eight. The proposed number of places on this subcommittee is four. Are there any questions? Can I please ask for a proposal? Councillor Baker, have a second, councillor Rowland, thank you. Can we please move to a vote? Can all those in favour please raise their hands?
That's eight-four.
Can I ask for any exceptions, no extensions? In that case, I can confirm that the terms of reference of the Personnel Subcommittee have been approved. Can I now please ask for the names of the members to be appointed to the committee by each municipal group? Can I please have the names of the three Conservative group members?
Councillors Anderson, Sartorl and Stone.
Thank you. Can I please have the names of the one Liberal Democrat group member?
Beth Rowland.
Thank you. Thank you. These appointments have been made. Next, we move on to approving the terms of reference of the Climate Emergency Subcommittee. These can be found on page eighteen of Appendix eight. The proposed number of places on this subcommittee is four. Are there any questions? Can I?
Yes, sorry, on page eighteen, you did say Climate Emergency Subcommittee, didn't you?
This is the Climate Emergency Subcommittee.
In the, in the appendix, it says three councillors.
Did have four appointed last year, so I can obviously, if that is what has been proposed, it is four members.
I can clarify, it was changed to three, that was myself and Wicks and Carol. So that is consistent of what it became.
So there are?
Three seats.
Three seats. So can I have the names of the Conservative group members? Oh, for that, for that take, to follow.
For the terms of reference, actual standards.
To change from four to three.
Notice, notice, three, that's so.
All right, so we haven't voted yet on the actual approval of terms of reference. So will you propose? Councillor Wicks, thank you. And a second, councillor Baker. So can we move to a vote now? Can all those in favour please raise their hands?
That's page four.
Can I have the no against, no extensions? So in that case, I can confirm that the terms of reference of the Climate Emergency Subcommittee have been approved. So we now need to ask for the names of the members to be appointed to the committee by each municipal group. So can I have the names of the Conservative group?
The Conservatives, if we keep Baker and councillor Brinkley.
Can I have the name of the one Liberal Democrat?
I'm myself.
Thank you, councillor John. Okay, thank you, these appointments have been noted. Next, we move on to approving terms of preference of the town elected working party. These can be found on page nineteen of page eight. The proposal replaces on this group. Are there any questions? Can I please ask for a proposal? Councillor Baker, have a second one, Councillor O'Neill. And we please move to a vote. Those in favour, please raise their hands.
Four, that's eight four.
No against and no abstentions. In that case, I can confirm that the terms of preference of the town elected working party have been approved. And I now please ask for the names of the members to be appointed to the working party by each political group. And I have the names of the two Conservative group members.
Councillor Anderson, Councillor Brindley, as is today.
And can I have the names of the one Liberal Democrat?
Yes, Richard Skeg.
These appointments have been noted. You now have come to approving the terms of preference of the Woodley Town Centre Partnership. You will receive an email with a fish and a number of articles, you shall have a half copy of this on your own table. The proposed number of places for members on this partnership is two. Does anybody have any queries? And please ask for a proposal and a second one to approve terms of preference. Councillor Baker, Councillor Brindley, thank you. Can we please move to a vote? And all those in favour, please raise their hands.
That's four, that's eight four.
No against and no abstentions. In that case, I can confirm that the terms of preference of the Woodley Town Centre Partnership have been approved. So can I now ask for the names of the council nominees to be appointed to the partnership?
For the Conservatives, we nominate Keith Baker for the first slot and Mary Holmes for the second slot, subject to her agreement.
May I have two members to?
That's, that's not the one proposing. I'm sure she'll get the second here. But there may well be other nominations.
Are there any other nominations? Any other council nominations for, for this? No, it doesn't look like it is, so we need to just ignore it. So the votes for this, they don't actually matter, okay? We move on to approving the terms of preference of the Youth Services Working Party. These can be found on page twenty-two of page eight. The proposal replaces on this working party's board. Do you have any queries? And please ask for a proposal and a second one. Councillor Baker. Can we please now move to a vote? And all those in favour, please raise their hands.
That's the four, that's eight four.
Thank you, in that case, I can confirm that the terms of preference of the Youth Services Working Party have been approved. And I now please ask for the names of the members who will be appointed to the working party by each political group. Can I please have the names of the three Conservative group members?
The three Conservative members are Councillors Brant, Chadwick and Gilder.
Thank you, can I please have the names of the one Liberal Democrat?
Yes, Richard Skeg.
Thank you. These appointments have been noted. So that's the strategy resources. Next, we will review the subcommittee's working party and partnership on which the leisure services committee is the parent committee. So Matthew, can you please confirm that the members of the leisure services committee were eligible to vote on this?
Yes, those councillors appointed are Councillors Brant, Smith, Horskins, Gilder, Swallow, Lewis, Heep, Joel and Alison Jari.
So firstly, we need to approve the terms of preference of the community youth partnership. These can be found on page twenty-three of page eight. The proposed number of places for members on this partnership is four. Councillor O'Neill.
Thank you, yeah, I think the number of councillors should be increased to six, I'd like to propose that.
So do we have anybody who can second that? Okay, so the proposal should be sure of our, the proposal. So it's two. So can I have, for those who agree with that, to raise your hands before that proposal?
Sorry, is there any?
It's only, yeah, that parent committee's vote. So that is, yeah, that is three, four.
And anyone against the proposal?
And that's four against.
Are there any abstentions for that vote?
That's two abstentions. So four against, so what we will do is we will revert to getting a proposal and second on to number being four as published.
Okay. So as Matthew just said, we will revert back to Keith Baker as members on this partnership to four. So I need now a proposal and a second one for this. Council Gilder proposing, Councillor Brant seconding. Can we now move to a vote? And all those in favour, please raise their hands.
Six four.
And those in against, please raise their hands.
Three against, that's it.
Thank you, in that case, I can confirm that the terms of preference of the community youth partnership have been approved. And I now please ask for the names of the members who will be appointed to the partnership by each political group. Can I have the names of the three Conservative group members?
The Conservative members are Councillors Chen, Gilder and Forrow.
Can I have the name of the one Liberal Democrat?
Yes, Beth Rowland.
Thank you. These appointments have been noted. For the community partnership, we also need to know if we have up to ten representatives of the partnership. Okay, now Matthew, can you confirm who they are?
Yes, we, we have four confirmed representatives within the community partnership. They are Sam Milligan, Trina Farrents, Steve Alton and Paul Cassidy.
So that's all.
That's, that's four, that's four representatives at the moment. We still wait some of the spots from Graham Sumler and Lorian Price, who were members last year, to see if they're willing to continue, so.
Can you tell us what organisations they're from?
Okay, so Sam Milligan is from just around the corner charity, Trina Farrents is from Bullmer's Gym Club, Steve Alton is from Woodley United Football Club, Paul Cassidy is from R.
Next, we move on to approving the terms of preference of the three G-Pitch Steering Group Subcommittee. These can be found on page twenty-five of page eight. The proposal replaces on this subcommittee is four. Are there any questions? And please ask for a proposal? Councillor Brant, have a second one. That's released, thank you. Can we please move to a vote? And all those in favour, please raise your hands.
Seven four.
All those against?
None against.
All those that say?
No abstentions.
In that case, then I can confirm that the terms of preference for the three G-Pitch Steering Group Subcommittee have been approved. And I now please ask for the names of the members who will be appointed to the committee by each political group. Can I please have the names of the two Conservative group members?
Yeah, the two Conservative members being appointed are Councillors Brant and Lewis.
Can I please have the name of the one Liberal Democrat group member?
Yes, Richard Skeg.
Thank you. Very recent appointments have been noted. Next, we will review the subcommittee's working parties and partnerships on whom the planning and community committee is the parent committee. So again, Matthew, can you please confirm the members of the planning and community committee who are eligible to vote?
Yeah, those are eligible, both are Councillors Wicks, Chen, Brant, Sartorol, Stone, Baker, Skeg, Joel and Magro.
We need to approve the terms of preference of the cycling and woodley subcommittee. These can be found on page twenty-seven of page eight. The proposed number of places on this subcommittee is six. Are there any questions? And please ask for a proposal? Councillor Baker, have a second one. Councillor Chen. So can we now proceed to a vote? And all those in favour, please raise their hands.
Seven four.
And all those against?
None against.
Any abstentions?
No abstentions.
In that case, I can confirm that the terms of preference for the cycling and woodley subcommittee have been approved. Can I now please ask for the names of the members who will be appointed to the committee by each political group? Can I please have the names of the four Conservative group members?
Yeah, the four members appointed are Councillors Gilder, Brant, Chadwick and Phil Smith.
And please have the name of the one Liberal Democrat group member?
Yes, but I'm sure no views, another cyclist on that working group, which are few and far between, I'd like to propose Alex Heep, please, to address that.
And can I please have the name of the name of the termative group member?
Alison Magro, please.
Thank you. These appointments have been noted. I say we stick to the terms of preference of the Bullmer SCOL group joint subcommittee, which are provided on page twenty-eight of page eight. And then we need to note the appointment of members to this joint subcommittee. The preference, there are three places for members on this joint subcommittee, including a name substitute. Does anybody have any questions on this? So can I now please ask for the names of the members to be appointed to the joint subcommittee by the Conservative group? Which is one?
Yes, there's two members for that, and it's Councillors Baker and the Councillor Gilder will be the name substitute.
And one member on the Liberal Democrat group?
Councillor Joel.
Councillor Joel. Thank you, it's Councillor Joel. So Matthew, these appointments have been noted. Next, we move on to the appointment of council representatives outside bodies. Firstly, one outside body is admitted on the list, including the Liberal Democrat. This is the working and parish parish liaison board. To which one member, a substitute are appointed. And you can keep that, we'll do this as we go through the list. Members are required to vote on each and every representative. However, to speed up proceedings, I am proposing that we initially read through each outside body and ask for nominations. If there are more nominees to a place at a particular outside body, then we will take a vote on a specific appointment. Then at the end, we will vote on all the appointments together. Does anybody have any queries for this? In that case, we'll proceed. Mark Shear, Association of Local Councils, we are going to see, there are two places. Can I have a nomination, please?
We nominated one person, David Brant, Councillor Brant.
Sorry, who's the second one?
We nominated.
Oh, just, oh, yes, you're just doing one. Oh, sorry, Councillor.
Can I nominate Beth Rowland, please?
Working on this association of local councils, I've got no appointment to be made until the future of the association is determined. Uh-huh, there are two places, nominations for those. Councillor Baker?
I'd like to nominate Councillor Gilder for one, and Sheila Flower is subject to her agreement as the second one.
Great, that's a job.
I was going to throw Sheila now.
Okay. Campaign Exways, one place, possible deputy, nomination, please?
Councillor Wicks? Just for one.
And the deputy, Councillor O'Neill?
Councillor Joel.
Thank you. Citizens of Iswokeham, one place, any nominations about? Councillor O'Neill?
Councillor Joel.
Councillor Joel. Frances Woodford Park, there's one place, any nominations?
I nominate place seven. That should be fine.
Highwater Vanishing Conference, there are two places, Councillor Baker?
I nominate Councillor Gilder and Mary Holmes, again, subject to her agreement.
Thank you. The eight Museum of Parks and Recreation Trust, one place, nominations?
Councillor Green.
Poornecks Charity, two places, two servants of twenty twenty-six, any nominations? Councillor Joel?
Yes, could I nominate Beth Rowland?
Are any other nominations? Just one.
And I ask for the Horseman Charity?
Yes, I would like to propose.
Councillor St, Councillor St.
Kate Gilder.
Kate Gilder, Councillor Gilder, are going that council, or did you want to?
I understood that Kate Gilder was going to participate in the Poornecks Charity, but if she does not want to, I'm very happy to participate.
Councillor Gilder, you plan to continue? You are, yeah, Councillor Gilder, Councillor St. So Freddie Ross, one place, nominations, Councillor Joel?
Yeah, I propose Alex King to continue.
Councillor Lee. So the District Welfare Education Trust, there's one place, any nominations?
Councillor Smith.
The Bullmer School, cover, one place, any nominations for Councillor Joel?
Could I nominate now to Alison Jari, assuming she's happy to continue?
Why, have it answered, yes. The working and parish working team, Climate Emergency Working Group, there are one place, nominations, Councillor O'Neill?
Yeah, Councillor Joel.
Thank you. Councillor Joel. The Woodley Volunteers Centre, one place, any nominations, Councillor Joel?
Councillor Gilder?
Yeah, Councillor Gilder. And Woodley Volunteer Centre, one place.
Councillor Swallow?
Actually, working where Irish communities on Pollan, one place for a substitute, any nominations for that? Councillor O'Neill?
Yeah, Councillor Joel, please.
Okay, so one place and one substitute, do you have, Councillor Joel?
Yes, could I nominate Tom McCann as deputy, please?
Thank you, Councillor McCann for deputy. So that's the end of the list. So I now need a proposal to vote on this list. Who's out to propose? Councillor Baker, Councillor Man, I have a second one, Councillor Brindley. So now proceed to a vote to approve the appointment of council representatives to outside bodies. All those in favour, please raise your hands.
That's twenty.
Are there any against? Please raise your hands.
None against.
Any abstentions, please raise your hands. Any objections, please raise your hands.
No abstentions.
In addition, we also ask to note that the foreign representatives appointed previously by former councillors will continue in twenty twenty two without the need for reappointment. So I've got Poorlands Charity, two places, councillors Chen and Mrs Flannan, serving for twenty twenty four. The Rob Macfarlane Arms House Charity, councillor Mylone, serving for twenty twenty four. Our seven members, we need to appoint the cheque signatures for the next municipal year. I propose that we retain the same signatures as currently appointed, which is councillor Baker, councillor Bragg, councillor Stone and councillor Swallow. Do I have second pick for that? Thank you very much councillor Ridley. Does anybody wish to make any other proposal for our signature? And I just remove to a vote, and all those in favour, please raise your hands.
Forty four.
But all those against, please raise your hands.
No against.
And all those who wish to stay, please raise your hands.
That's six, that's better.
So in that case, that is approved. So we now, on March twelfth, which is to receive the minutes of the Poorlands Meeting held in February twenty twenty two, the minutes were agreed together, and we see on page seven, are there any questions for parliament regarding this? Just one question about the vote. Who'd like to start off something?
Sorry, are we going through each one?
No, we'll just basically approve the minutes for the council.
No.
There's just council now, there's another question.
Yeah, here to verse, I written that these minutes are true and correct. So according to my observation, these are not true and correct. An example was set in previous full council meeting minutes from December eighth, twenty twenty. And you can check it from page one of these minutes. One councillor gave a comment and two councillors responded to that. In those minutes, all these comments are recorded with their names in one paragraph, last paragraph. In previous full council meeting, you know, Goodley Mayor has to suspend council meeting for a few minutes because Keith Baker tried to interfere in discretionary powers of chair. And he tried to indirectly threaten another councillor. Nothing is recorded here. So I request that all these details should be recorded, keeping a new example of December eighth, twenty twenty, page five.
So your question, your question is on those items on the, of the list?
I am quoting example from previous minutes, how they were recorded.
Are these not in the minutes of the meeting held on the eighth of February?
Eight per December, page five, last paragraph.
Is the same for two of the meeting held on the eighth of February?
I'm just giving example that that incident was recorded with names, comment and all replies. But nothing happened here, it's this situation is more important, more critical. In three years, duration of this process, Goodley Town Mayor never suspended any meeting. It was first time that previous meeting was suspended. In three years, no councillor threatened any other councillor in full council meeting. Despite this, nothing is recorded here. So I request to record all that incident, it can be checked from recording, kindly recorded full day in these minutes.
So I can understand your question.
It's, it's not special.
I'm just trying to understand your question. Is it about the fact that the mayor's so busy meeting?
No, no, I am not asking any question. I am, it's written there are these minutes correct or true. I'm only giving my observation that these minutes are not correct.
You're right, so which part, okay, can you tell us which part, which particular item on those minutes is not correct?
Okay, you tell everyone, Goodley Town Council staff can check from recording when that thing happened, when Keith Baker made that comment, when chair had to suspend that meeting and when councillor Khan was threatened that he should be thrown out of this meeting. So I want all whatever happened and I'll give you one example, that there is already one set example, these things can be recorded.
Okay. So in the minutes, is there anything that refers to that? I'll just go check on the minutes.
Yes, yes.
Is there any other, any comments around that?
I have, but I'll wait until you've finished. My just, my response, the query is that the adjournment of the meeting was not missed, is that correct?
Yes, it's not including these minutes, that's what I'm saying.
Chairman, I can't remember the February meeting being adjourned.
It was adjourned.
Madame Chen, it would be helpful for councillor Nata to actually say what the agenda item it is, rather than having to flow through.
It sounds set to four, doesn't it?
So I'm sure some of them are.
I get the council saying that it's missing.
So where does? The adjournment would be relevant to a particular item.
At that time. Could you provide us, yeah, councillor Baker? Where we are starting from, I just want the seven to four.
Sorry, chair, yeah, I was part of my country. It is not for members to write the minutes. It's just for officers. Sorry, chairman, I haven't finished yet. It's for officers to keep a reasonably accurate record of minutes. If members have raised concerns that are valid, officers, if they haven't got the information available, need to go away and look at their notes and then report back to members about the accuracy or inaccuracy of detail or lack of detail in the agenda we have here this evening. It's not the first time that something has happened in the county where the minutes have not been verbatim, and quite rightly so. It would be quite a long work for anybody to write down whatever's on the second. But important instances, like suspending a meeting, that's basic. Threat, officers recording, members being threatened by other members, that's quite important. Especially when you end up telling members, reporting people to stand for support for spurious reasons. If the problem is that officers have kind of time to write the minutes, then we can make that a difficult problem. But I'd like to know why, if it wasn't recorded, if it was recorded, why wasn't it presented to us?
That's the same question of councillor, that we all did a bit of discussing that one. You're asking the same question.
My question is why, why is it not?
They should just answer, councillor, because.
I, I can probably just clarify, because obviously I'm the person that writes the minutes. The legal duty in terms of writing minutes is to record decisions to the council. Any other example of what's written and what's said and what's said in the, in the minutes is up to obviously the person writing the minutes to determine what, what they feel is important to capture and what not to capture. So these could be far less, they could be far more, depending on what's decided on there. I made a decision not to include the full rast of information because having listened back to the recordings several times, I felt that they're able to take in a very, very large length of time to explain all the steps that led up to all those points. To give an example, we also now have audio recordings of the meeting in full, so people can go back and listen to the full history to understand exactly what happened. But because actually what happened there wasn't a decision, it wasn't an actual action that took place in the meeting, I decided to omit it. I think the, obviously the agenda asks councillors to approve, to receive the minutes, so obviously councillors can take a vote on whether the council is in favour of the minutes as they stand, or whether they are against them and then wish to amend them in some way. So really, I think it's probably on the agenda, right, it's up to the council to determine whether they wish to reject the minutes in their current form and ask it to be changed or to approve them.
Yes, I think that's a fair view of the answer. Councillor?
Yes. I partially agree with this and partially disagree. There, I have quoted, there is already one example set on December eighth, twenty twenty. Page five, last paragraph. That was not a decision, that was discussion. There was some abrupt comment from a councillor and then there were two replies with their names, original comment and reply. Everything is recorded there and written there. If these are only decisions, why it was written there on December eighth? Why it was written this? And if one example is set, then we should follow that example, are there two separate rules? One for one and some other rule for some other one. I am only saying that example is already set, so kindly follow that example of December eighth, twenty twenty, page five. And I, in these three years, did Goodley Mayor suspend any meeting, any full council meeting? Anytime, it was first time it was suspended. Did any councillor threaten any other one? In these three years, it was first time someone was threatened. Did any councillor ask, interfere in discretionary powers of chair in these three years, it was first time. So these three points, interfering in discretionary powers, threatening other councillor and suspension of meeting. Don't you think it's important? And it should be recorded, just like if a smaller, much smaller incident of importance was recorded on December eighth. My point is this, I'm not talking about voting. If it depends upon voting, then majority party will want, will do what it wants.
Councillor, would you, would you allow councillor, the deputy town park to sit?
Yes.
And then ask our councillor Lawson to sit?
Just say, councillor Baker, we'll take that, that point on board at officer level. We do work very hard to try and provide a narrative to those decisions that are taken and to give it some context. As Maki said, the requirement is for decisions to be recorded, not for the discussion, but we do try and include that.
Sorry, quite a hard one.
Just gonna finish from my, that is.
Sorry, sorry, it's gonna be subject. I have already quoted one, that was not a decision, which is already recorded. I just want to explain that. Sorry, sorry, I'm just explaining, I have already said this, that on December eighth, twenty twenty, page five, last paragraph, that was not decision, that was discussion and it is recorded with names, original comment and reply of everyone. So you can check. Yes.
What I'm saying, take on board your, your climate and our inconsistency and that's something we try very hard to do. It's not a requirement of the minutes to report that, but we try and do that to provide context. That doesn't affect the accuracy of the minutes unless members voting on it decide that it doesn't, and that makes change.
That's it, councillor, thank you. Councillor Lawson?
Thank you, lady man. I have some empathy, just like I've worked with Tom and councillor Margaret, councillor, with what they've said. When we stand up at these meetings and we put our points across, sometimes we feel a little bit sad, it's a bit disappointing that we haven't been acknowledged far into the meeting, I can, I can understand that. However, these minutes were circulated three months ago. Now, I read through them when I had them. If I had any queries, I'd have been on the old email to the deputy clerk, Autumn Matthew, raising those points. I think to wait for three months for a Tuesday evening when we're all sat down here with a very full agenda isn't possibly the best use of our time here this evening. However, the points they've raised are pertinent, worthwhile, and I'm pleased to hear the deputy clerk is going to review that and come back to us with some response in future.
Thank you, councillor Lawson, so like, what are your qualifications on that? Councillor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But if you do refer, I will forward you one email, which I sent to, I think, the fifty two clerk nearly six months ago. It was again regarding change decisions and I was advised that I can raise my point in meeting, not through email. I can forward you that, if it if you do.
Councillor Khan?
Yeah. Uh, thanks for your feedback. Hopefully this issue won't be raised again because it's now recorded. It does, just so that members are aware, can officers tell us, was the decision of the chair recorded in the minutes? Nice and simple question. Was that decision of the chair recorded in the minutes to suspect a adjournment?
That was the question of the councillor.
I'm asking the officers a question. Was it recorded in the minutes, your job, as you've just been told?
It's a statutory question.
Was that a decision, as I, going to answer, thank you. What's the answer?
It wasn't a decision, it wasn't a statutory question or motion or something that a decision is made on in the minutes that needs to be recorded by law. It was determination on the, the operator of that meeting.
Thank you. The reason why I'm saying that for old scurvy seeing dogs like me, who've been vocal, government, politics for years, get a bit frustrated when they actually bring a point to the council and then as far as the public's concerned, it's, it never happened, it disappeared, it doesn't exist. You can't really send them a copy of a YouTube video of what you said, it doesn't work like that. I understand the time constraints, but the decision of the chairs to adjourn the meeting, basic, you should record that. The reasons for it, nice and simple, and then an explanation about the decision and who reports it. And members being rowdy, fair enough, members being threatening, that's not acceptable. So hopefully from here on in it won't happen again. The points that are raised is about what you've done in the past hasn't been consistent. Hopefully from now on it will be, because the officers are credit for that. Members don't always extend, are extensive between legal decisions and non-legal decisions, follow processes and then follow processes. Perhaps there's a bit of members training needs to be done on that as well, so that officers can show members what they're supposed to be doing and all members will understand, so that you want it. Thank you, chairman.
Are there any other questions before we proceed to the next two seconds of this?
I am a bit concerned because some people, I think, don't remember that adjournment, I do. And it's quite important because it hasn't happened very often. Very, very rarely does the meeting get stopped for whatever reason. My concern is that if people are going to vote on these minutes, there is no other information in there, they can't vote for a change or against a change because we don't know what the change is. And I think it was a decision by yourself and I think it was the right one to do to calm down the situation during the meeting. And I think it's sufficiently important that it should be in the minutes. Now, whether or not we can suspend the agreement to these minutes to another meeting and to get those minutes rectified, could be my proposal. I don't know if that's something we can do, I hope we can do that.
Yes, one of the things that you've said is possible.
Absolutely, yeah, it's happened previously, I think that where there's a decision to amend the minute or policy to amend the minute more than just a simple spending error or no, then it gets taken away and then gets returned to the next, the next full council meeting for approval.
So then we can go to the body that everybody agrees to the proposal, so can I have a second?
No, I'm not second to you. I'm not second to you. Councillor? I'm one of those people, maybe it's because of my age, I can't remember it. I'm not saying it didn't happen, I physically can't remember it. So, you know, suspending it and then rewriting it and then, I still can't remember it. And because it was back in February. No, it's a powerful hustle and burden. What I would be comfortable with, and I agree that it should be, something like that should be recorded, precisely why it's happened and if it's. precisely why it's happened and if it's a result of, say, for instance, a rowdy behaviour from a councillor, it should be named, they should be named or whatever. If it's rowdiness from the hundreds of residents who come, it should be in there. But I have very grave concerns for me personally, looking at a revised minutes for this meeting from back in February, to agree that that was actually what happened. Because I can't remember it, I don't know how many other people.
He's recording.
Maybe, maybe, Carol, you and my chat afterwards and you can tell me what happened. It may not trigger my memory. But, sorry.
Councillor.
Thank you. I think the, the point that councillor Baker made is actually the, the, the perfect reason for why it should be limited. Because if you leave things to memory, having it written down will remind you. We can't keep voting down things because we can't remember them. We have to rely on the accuracy of the minutes, the consistency of the precedents that have been said before. Where, you know, the, and it's also, I think, really important for democracy that it's not just about decisions, how decisions are made, but also how decisions get to be made. So that involves debate and discussion. And quite often, you know, that these documents can and do get studied by politics students, by people who are interested. If anyone wants to join this council or put themselves up as a member of this council or as a member of the public, I think it's really important to educate them by reading these minutes. It's much easier and much more convenient to read minutes, it's great that we've got them recorded. But I think in the spirit of democracy, this is really important and the minutes are, it's not just about, you know, councillor proposed this, members voted, this is the result, you know, four against, eight to, eight to four. And, and it's just, you can't get this, the spirit of what proper community engagement is about. So I would really like to have a much more kind of storytelling element to these minutes. And I agree, it can't be verbatim and it, you know, is a difficult task. And we really appreciate the work that the officers put in. But I think it's really important for things like last memories as well as active democratic engagement in the council, that the minutes are reflective of the entire spirit and mood. Sometimes, you know, when the, the feeling mood is quite high, I think that's really important. Because again, it shows how we get through sort of difficult debates as well. And the importance of chairing and debating. Thank you.
Councillor.
Sorry, I have only one big question, Matthew. Sorry, kindly recorded today's minutes. I'm very worried after hearing councillor Baker's polite remarks. Kindly recorded that he doesn't remember anything. Kindly recorded.
Oh, excuse me.
Is that a fact?
Chair, chairman, you know. This is, this is now, this is now deteriorating into personal abuse. I said I couldn't remember that precise adjournment. I said other people here have not, do not remember it either. I, to be perfectly honest, and what I would like to be recorded is the constant personal attacks that councillor Magg had on me. I think that's very unfair, but most of it's untrue.
Um, sorry.
Sorry. I, excuse me, councillor Bragg was the next person to say.
I'm sorry, I didn't finish and he stood up and he started thinking. I, I was still standing, I just wanted to find out.
I do think you've had your say, councillor Magg.
I, I didn't, no, I'm just pointing out that I was thinking and he stood up and he started.
Councillor. If I sit down and make councillor Bragg say, then I'll return to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree that it should have been put in the minutes, full stop. But in fairness, we've all had these minutes within a week of the last town council meeting, when it was fresh in people's mind. If you disagree with the minutes that are sent to you, they're sent in draft form, that is your time to put forward.
I'm one of the, I'm one of the, the Deputy Clerk has already said that, agreed, that he referred a member to this meeting. It is absurd for a Tory member to then turn around and say, you've got three months to do it. He's been directed by the officers to raise the question at the meeting. So either the Tory member withdraws that allegation or he opens his ears and listens to what the officers are actually saying.
Councillor Khan.
Thank you.
According to the standing orders, a point of order, and the advice by councillor to apply the breach of standing orders.
Yes, that's correct.
Can we use this to simply channel the viewpoint of?
Point of order, point of order, chair. Point of order, chair. The breach of standing orders was councillor Keith Baker interrupted a member while he was speaking. And the members are not allowed to interrupt other members while they're speaking. And the chair agreed and let him speak, that was the point of order. You had to let the member finish speaking. Then councillor Baker can take his turn like all the rest of us, my point of order is finished. Thank you.
Um, can we, which, which is, which is, which is. Councillor, so, sorry, I promise councillor Magg to, to speak next. Councillor.
Okay, chair, thank you very much. I will summarize all my argument in one or two sentences. I am trying to protect discretionary powers of chair. That's my main point. If it's personal attack for someone, I'm happy and I will continue these personal attacks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to go to councillor Seig, who's patiently sitting there for the long time for a second.
Thanks, sorry, a long while ago, I think councillor Joel proposed pushing these minutes. And I think for the purposes of this council, we need to move on. I'd like to second that. And I think, I, I agree, something needs to be limited and there needs to be a change, so I'll support that. I wasn't here for the meeting, so in that respect, I'm obviously having no number of it and it would be good to be reflected. But I think, yeah, moving on, I hope colleagues would agree would be beneficial for this room, right now.
Thank you, councillor. I'm very, I'm very excited to, to deal with councillor George's proposal.
Thank you, I will keep it brief. I followed on from councillor Baker, his point about not remembering the minutes. And that was kind of part of the argument for why we need them minuteed. I don't think having that discussion is personal attack or abuse. It's literally just repeating. In fact, we're repeating the needs of councillors here because councillors don't always remember everything and it's making the point that, you know, it's not a personal attack to repeat councillor acknowledging that they don't remember something. Also, with regards to the three months or whatever it is that councillors bragged said that we had to write this, I think it's really important again for democracy that things are transparent and they are brought to full council meetings. Email exchanges aren't presented to members of the public. We've got two members of the public today and on recording who will again be part of the discussion around meeting and documenting what happens at council. So I think there is value in emailing officers, but there's also massive, massive value in bringing things to the council, otherwise we can just conduct the whole council by email or via WhatsApp chats.
Okay. Councillor George, would you, sorry, councillor Bragg?
Yeah, I'd just like to come back to that. At no time did I mention three months. What I said was that we all get the minutes within a week. And if there are any problems, any disagreements, it is a lot easier to get the minutes amended by emailing the officers and having that corrected. That is what I said and made no mention of three months at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councillor.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm just wanted, wanted to say, I think this is a slightly unusual item for minutes. And I'm a bit concerned about the best use of the committee secretary's time. And I hope he doesn't appeal of urge to provide a lengthy description of the incident.
Councillor Joel, would you like to, as we've made your proposal again, and then I think councillor Seig will second it and then we'll vote on it and then if there's something.
Yes, of course. My proposal is that these minutes aren't signed as a true record this evening. And in fact, they go back with consideration of what has been discussed here. But some people don't remember fair enough what went on. But it was a very unusual thing to happen when we adjourned to the meeting. And the chairman left the room, which as I said was perfectly understandable. And all I'm saying is not wrong, not right, but let's get a record that we can actually vote on rather than votes, otherwise it's voting on a mission that nobody seems to remember.
Okay. Councillor Seig, I'm even.
Second that, thank you.
Can we proceed to votes on councillor George's proposal?
No, 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 you asked a question, the answer's more or less, you asked.
Sir?
I was to ask, the motion of people who came would be meant to mention, I'd like to discuss it. I wish to raise a point on that.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. At the meeting, I raised the question and asked the officers for direction about standing orders. Can committees, I apologize, do committees need to have a proposal and second it? I was assured by the officer that under the new standing orders, that they would accept, you didn't need to do that. I was then advised a month, six weeks later, that the officers had read the rules, had misinterpreted it because it was such a new set of standing orders, that it is now in fact a case that recommendations coming from committee need to be proposed and seconded. It is not referred to the council before. That is also not being recorded in the minutes of that meeting. So it's not just one little thing. I, I find that quite important. It's not that an officer gave members the wrong advice. It's that members might be sitting here thinking the wrong thing. And it will give the officers the opportunity to clarify the fact that under the new standing orders, anything that comes from a committee must be proposed and seconded and then we vote on it, not just taken as a, a direction. That's not minuteed. And it shouldn't be, again, another, my opinion, reasonably request.
I can go back to that, obviously, the minutes had already been written by the time, I think that clarification came through. I'm happy because what, what we have tended to do in the minutes in the past is where things need to be clarified after the meeting. I don't know the terminology, but a square bracket has been used with a committee officer note, a town guard note, a note to clarify something like this. I'm more than happy to add that clarification into this set of minutes as part of the revisions that are being discussed and voted on.
And that would be very helpful. And because again, these are new rules, we've all got to learn, we've all got to govern that, it will come. And so if it wasn't just one point, it could also happen again in future. So we need a soft process for that and we would have a firm and clear. Thank you.
Councillor Lawson.
Lady Mayor, we're now discussing the amendments that councillor George has referred councillor Seig seconded. Why does councillor Khan refer back to standing orders and other parts within those minutes? But we should now just be discussing the amendment to not agree the signed minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For clarification, if you've read the rules, any time that something is proposed to the council, the secretary, members are allowed to discuss it, you wish to continue the vote, you can take it, members wish to discuss it? It hasn't been, that's unusual. You're not discussing the amendment. I'm talking about examples of what they're meant for now.
No, the amendment, excuse me, excuse me, one person to take, please put on the floor.
It's not under standing rules, that's your issue. Thank you very much, sir.
I find that is offensive, I'm amazedly. I have worked in democracy for 25 years, 37 years in a previous career. So if you don't understand or believe in them, please do not make such accusations. We are currently debating, discussing the amendment. And the amendment is that we vote not to do, not to accept this as accurate records. Am I wrong or am I correct?
We're not going to vote on councillor George's proposal. The councillor Seig has seconded, all those opposed to councillor George's proposal. Please, your answer.
Thirty-four.
All those against councillor George's proposal.
One against.
All those wish to stay, in motion.
Six abstentions.
So the motion is out?
Yes.
Okay, very much. So we've got to go now and move on to the, to the board. Item thirty, receive the minutes of group meeting meetings which have taken place since the last, for the council meeting. And I'd please ask councillor Wicks, the chairman, to present the minutes of the planning community meeting which was held on the first of March, twenty-two, set up on page seventeen, the agenda.
Can I ask you all to, to receive the minutes of the planning community meeting meeting held on the first of March, twenty-twenty-two, on pages seventeen, twenty-six, your agenda.
Well, councillor, is there a question for?
Thank you. On point ninety-five, the actress travel route. Do we know if we've actually lost the money that was going to be paid? Do we miss the, the boat on this first tranche of money for the cycleway? Or have we still got opportunity to get an, if an alternative book forward to the government? I don't know if the officers know.
I don't know that any decisions have been taken.
It's a borough's question.
Yes, it's a borough's.
It's a question for the borough.
Okay. Right.
I think when, when we're having a lay across and the interesting standing, I think it's, that wouldn't be a case for her.
Thank you.
Hello. Any more questions for councillor Wicks? Can we please remember to vote and proceed in these minutes? All those in favour, please raise their hands.
That's seventeen-four.
All those against, please raise their hands.
None.
All those who wish to stay, please raise their hands.
That's none.
I just wondered if you had mentioned that two houses have been left in the middle. So whose minutes are then duly received? Now please ask councillor Baker, the chairman, to present the minutes. You received, which was placed on the twenty-second of March, twenty-two, set up on page thirty-seven, the agenda.
Single page, it was a single, I tell you, it was of a personnel nature, which is why the details are here. So councillor, I think you will receive the minutes, thank you.
Are there any questions, councillor Baker, councillor Khan?
Yes. I believe that this meeting, financial report on investments was presented to members.
Personal supplement.
Investment. So if I must to make the mark.
This is the, this is the extraordinary meeting.
Oh, my, oh, with this, Margaret. Jumping ahead, jumping ahead.
Now please, the members, please move to vote and receive these minutes. All those in favour, please raise their hands.
That's eighteen-four.
All those against, please raise their hands.
No against.
All those who wish to stay, please raise their hands.
No abstentions.
No, it's not duly received. Now please ask councillor, it's based on ten minutes of the planning community meeting which was based on the twenty-ninth of March, twenty-two, on page thirty-five, the agenda.
Can I ask you please to receive the minutes of the planning community meeting meeting which was held on the twenty-first of March, and was on page twenty-nine to thirty-three of your agenda.
Many thanks, I have a question for councillor Wicks regarding the minutes. We then move to vote on the seat in these minutes, all those in favour, please raise their hands.
Eighteen-four.
All those against, please raise their hands.
No against.
And all those who wish to stay, please raise their hands.
No abstentions.
These minutes are duly received. Now please ask councillor Bragg, the chairman, you should ten minutes on the day, so it's a reason. which took place on the trial of April twenty-two, which was on page thirty-five, the agenda.
Thank you, Lady Mayor. I'd like to present to the Council the minutes of the meeting of the leisure services committee on the trial of April twenty-two, which are pages thirty-five through to thirty-seven in the agenda.
Many thanks for some questions, Council Baker, regarding the minutes. Council Wicks?
On forty-four, yeah, just to reiterate the concern, the amount of time that it's taken to get this new youth strategy off the ground. Please, can we have the initial meeting of the Youth Strategy Working Party ASAP?
Captain, how far you progress with the thing?
Yeah, I did mention at that meeting, we said how this question was of interest, which we'd advised of that meeting last week, so we had some response.
Right, when's the deadline for responses to come in?
It was last week.
Last week? Right. Can we arrange a meeting of that working party as soon as possible, please? Okay. All right.
Okay, any more questions? So we've got to talk.
Just one last before we go. Can you tell me what the situation is with the generator? Is it actually up and running, Bill?
We've got it, it's on the sky. It needs wiring in because electrical box, which is going to, which is our research area. That isn't in, we were about to start, so you can electric works on the sensor, so it hasn't gone up yet. But we'll go, so you can hear that from the.
So shall we proceed to the vote on the seeing these minutes? All those in favour, please raise their hands.
Seventeen four.
All those against, please raise their hands.
No against.
All those who wish to stay, please raise their hands.
No abstentions.
Minutes are due to be received. Now, please ask Council Baker, she was saying the structure was offered in the meeting which was held on the nineteenth of April twenty-two, set up on page thirty-one, the agenda.
I present the minutes of the strategic resources committee, twenty-nine, thirty-nine to forty-six. I note that there was no reference to investments, so I don't believe any discussion was held on investment. But I'm sure Matthew will correct me if that's wrong. So if there's any questions, I'm, proceed to the vote.
Are there any questions for Council Baker, regarding the minutes? Council Wicks?
Yes, thank you. I had inadvertently included my question. And this was on page thirty-nine, or it was the end of the minutes, but it's actually two items there. But I assume on page forty, there's a P. The officers have found out what that financial issue was. And then it is behalf of the clarifying what that issue was for members, please.
These are the officers.
Yes, sorry, Council, did you ask me that again?
The two P says payments, borrowing, frequency of the gold in quarter five, da-da-da-da. There was basically, there was a question, it was standing.
Oh, yes, sorry, yes, that was, yes, it was the, it was a regular question. I'm sorry, I can't.
Sorry.
Yes, yes, it was, is the answer.
It was what we thought it was. Thank you.
Any more questions? And please move to the vote to see these minutes. All those in favour, please show your hands.
Seventeen four.
All those against, please raise their hands.
No against.
All those who wish to stay, please raise their hands.
No abstentions.
Minutes are due to be received. Now, please again, ask Council Wicks, she said the years of planning and the business proceeded to have a place in the twenty-sixth quarter, as well as what you say, the agenda.
I'll ask everybody then to receive the minutes of the planning community meeting meeting held on the twentieth of April, twenty-two, was on pages forty-seven and fifty-three of the agenda.
Any questions, Council?
Yes, so one three six, Twyford neighbourhood plan, just a little bit peeved. It wasn't members noted that the map of neighbourhood plan, it was actually me. But never mind. I just wondered, have we yet contacted Twyford and Chalver about this? Because it seems an excellent opportunity to get a route to Twyford station from Woodley. Have we actually contacted Twyford and Chalver yet?
Yes, the email went out to both of those on twenty-seventh, ten twenty AM.
Great.
The day after the English and Thames event happened.
Good. Thank you very much.
Council?
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to ask Lady, Madame Chairwoman, as to whether a letter would seem to imply, sorry, from the working borough about the bridge, the whole bridge issue on Article one four.
We haven't received response, no.
Any more questions? So we now proceed to vote on the seeing these minutes. All those in favour, please raise their hands.
Eighteen four.
All those against, please raise their hands.
No against.
All those who wish to stay, please raise their hands.
No abstentions.
These minutes are due to be received. Item forty, we need to see the statement from the leader of the council. Council, would you like to apply statement to members?
Lady Mayor, in light of the latest of the time, I will not be making a statement.
Now, please, we'll move on to item fifty, which asks members to consider a report on TC two twenty-two, which relates to the urban centre loan payments. And it's a good review there, on page fifty-five. Kevin, can you add to the data?
Yes, thank you. So I'll either recap in context. So a full council meeting in February resolved to cash in the investment portfolio. And we said to make up a shortfall of up to two million from the exit account that was budgeted in the twenty-two, twenty-three financial year. And that's the two million pounds of principal on the three loans that were taken out for the construction of this building. Two of those loans matured in March twenty-twenty-five, the other one in March twenty-twenty-six. And the result of the placement by this temporary in rapid funds, holding account that went in our investment prizes, pending transfer to a suitably rated account. Officers sought a program which has offered that level of security and protection. And we met with a representative of the CCLA, which is the Chancellor of Social and Local Authorities, who operate the public sector deposit fund, their product of actually. That fund is a triple A rated fund by Fitch Ratings, which is the highest one you can get. It was set up to provide security for organisations such as local councils. Then the particular project has over a hundred million pounds of fund used in investment from local capitals across the country and is overseen by the local authorities, which investment trust, and a group of government association. The long short of that is the funds are spread across a number of organisations, the number of banks, that's around, maybe around thirty. And the principle is that should any organisation within that fail in any way, fail in monitoring, that organisation will be called from the scheme. So it's based on an early warning system of close monitoring of those banks, which is how it achieves the triple A rating. And from what we can ascertain, and also from speaking to Raff, about that, that's the only fund at the moment that has that rating, which is why it's got a lot of money in it, basically, from local capital. So the key benefit of that public sector deposit fund is the level of security based on that monitoring, which is a daily monitoring of the banks that are used. One thing to note is, although not covered by the financial services compensation scheme, it is triple rated based on the processes in place. So it's probably the way to look at it, it produces risk by not exposing it in the first place, rather than relying on the compensation, or the financial services compensation scheme. Fund would attract interest over the period, it would be reinvested back in the fund. There's information on current interest rates, in supporting information, as today that rate's at zero point eight three percent, the fee's zero point zero eight percent on that. But as I said, the focus and the priority of that fund is security, that's really important, attracting particularly hundreds, although it's quite a lot higher than that from the bank. Funds can be accessed the same day, so it's an easy access condition. Further down the report, there is some information about potential for further investment. So potentially in addition to the short term funds to pay back two million. And that is the council money, which is considered placing other funds in the public sector deposit fund, as a more secure place where it might be with a kind of banking rate, because it's a higher rate of security that we've got with noise and Santander and for the rest of that money. Just for information, that money consists of seven hundred and fifteen, just over seven hundred and fifteen thousand pounds, which is the general reserve, and there are two times deposit accounts, one with Santander, one with noise, which is two hundred and fifty thousand pounds in each. The conclusion of the report is to set up a separate account from that two million, so we have a number of accounts, but they would operate on exactly the same basis. The other element there is the new treasury management strategy, completely not like said, that working party would need to be to agree that that's the way that the council wishes to go. There will be some questions there. Can I just kind of recap on the recommendations and add something there for information? The recommendations there are, one, the investment of the two million of the public sector deposit fund. Two is consideration of the other funds that the council has to be placed in the same fund. Third one is the review of the treasury management strategy, which we want to do anyway. The one that is on there, which I think is probably quite important and we would love to do, is reporting back to each S and R committee of exactly where those funds are at. How much is where, how much income that brought, so the members got that information. That doesn't actually get recorded anywhere other than in budget information, which shows that in a large step, I think, in doing all the stretching resources, it's like that information.
So it's hard to question data information.
Yes, two, two, just that's the information.
Information, best, the information, probably. So that's four. Are we done? Are there any questions? Council, please first of all, and then Council Chadwick, then.
Thank you. I mean, originally, we were talking about putting this two million into a bank. It's what you're saying is, whatever bank is available, this is a safer place to put the money than any bank, is that what you're basically saying?
Yeah, so high street banks are rated at one or two phases, the triple A rating, which takes into account a number of criteria. So it's all about risk and minimizing exposure, and that's why that is higher rated, yes.
So it's higher rated than a bank, right? And, but this investment, could it go down? Albeit, it would be in a very safe place.
Yeah.
But could that two million actually goes down?
So nothing is a hundred percent. It's the safest place, if you could put it, that's available to council. So it's safer than it would be in a bank. So it can.
It's safer, but we could lose money, we could actually not have two million.
Sorry, there's no exposure to the stock market or anything, so that the value can't say that.
Right, fine, thank you.
So is it Council Chadwick next, and then Council Wicks?
Yes, I was just wondering, do you know many other councils which have currently got investments in it?
Yeah, there's a lot function wide, there were quite a few, quite a few more locally. There would be just a moment, because I don't have a list of them yet. Yes, and one within town capital, Newbury, and Cheltenham, did got very in borough, based also in Oxford, West Berkshire. Now the S and C, the M G A, it's also in that.
All right, thank you. Council Wicks, Council Wicks?
Thank you, just a point of clarification, could you just, I'm talking about reserve now, Kevin. So is the increased banking cost that's going to be incurred with that offset by the increased interest? Yes. So it's cost neutral?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Council Wicks?
Yeah, I was just going to say actually that the CCLA public sector fund is also used by the Sonningwell Education Trust. But then it's been done for many, many years now, and it's always performed superbly. We're very happy with it.
So, Council Wicks?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry for bringing this up earlier, I adapted for some reason, I was a bit tense. Yes, and I, well, the report from the officers is pretty reasonable. We are not financial experts, and we don't have the financials of here, but maybe with a bit more detail. But I would caution members, as this evening as they did at the last meeting. It doesn't matter how many triple A ratings you have, you don't mean nothing. Anybody remembers back to two thousand and seven, eight, when the financial crash happened, with people selling rubbish mortgages, savings and poor, Robin Stanley, the big American companies, basically were selling junk bonds called triple A. I'm sure we are not smart enough here to smart those sort of guys. But we are here to look after, manage a reasonable approach to the community to money, because it's not ours. I understand the points raised about basically, if it is put in the bank, we're lucky if we don't lose anyone. That's just the nature of the way we do things in this country. But please remember, inflation will be ten percent this year, as expected, government forecast. So your purchasing power of your two million pounds by a ten percent drop, which effectively, if it wasn't for cash and banks, you'd be losing over two hundred grand. But my point is actually a slightly bigger one. I raised this eighteen months, two years ago, as a thing that members should be looking at in this council. Ethical investing. I was told at the time, with the tail end of our investment strategy, we don't really need to, we haven't really got that much to invest, we don't really need one. I think this is a classic example of why, if we had had an investment strategy a couple of years ago, we had a bit more thought about it, we could be saying to members here this evening, the officers could have gone back to, we're lending into banks, but we're lending to banks on the principle of green investment, ethical investment, non arms production investments. Have we asked any of these questions? Your report doesn't say we have, and I genuinely don't know. I think if we were going to put two million pounds of the community's money in there, I would be looking for some of these provisions to at least be informed by members. So my question to the officers is, have these questions been asked? Have we got the answers? Are we investing ethically? Are we investing in arms manufacturers, chemical products? Where is that money going? That's my big question, and so that's now a couple of other main problems. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, if I can provide some context, because of the nature of the fund and focus on security. rather than speculation, it's limited to other banks which are across all of it. I have a list there of financial institutions, which are dated in February. I'll just go through some, so if you, it is a number of high street banks that you recognize as part of it. There's a number of other banks, there's around 50 banking institutions there. There is a criteria for them to be in the scheme. I couldn't tell you what that was in relation to ethical criteria as opposed to security.
Thank you, Chair. I understand that I would expect more than the main financial high street to be the recipient of that money for one or more. But a reminder to members, walking by a council, lost 14 or 15 million pounds for five or six years via triple A investment. And Iceland, a country, I'm worried about. And to the share of Scotland, they're all Bank of Scotland. The biggest bank in the world seems to be the most inept bank. After who would realise they were acting the emperor with no clothes? I would think we have seriously missed a chance. Probably haven't made a good decision. We determined to say this evening that we would like our money while we want access. We want our money to be invested wherever reasonably costable and ethical and green, climate beneficial companies or investment strategies, portfolios, funds, whichever these people look at. So I think it's for us to give a direction. I'm not saying that becomes a be all and end all. I'm suggesting and proposing that our investments, all our investments must have an ethical dimension, an ethical strategy to this. Otherwise, the council position of being a climate emergency supporter, it puts up that machine on the face on that. That makes sense, you remember, is that clear?
Thank you, Counselor. Now, Counselor.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. You know, we should sort of give a scare to the subcommittee that will be managing our investments. Personally, I think security of the funds is paramount, obviously, because these are funds that belong principally to the electorate. However, if there are opportunities, safe opportunities to invest that money in ethical and environmental sustainability is a very important movement, then we should take those cautious approaches and make it part of that consideration.
Counselor.
Can I just highlight on page 58, the Public Sector Deposit Fund, about the fifth item down, it says responsible investment policy. And I read it out, it says, "We monitor our counterpart's environmental, social and governance risk management on a regular basis. Our research utilizes external data resources and our in-house ethical and responsible investment team", which I hope answers the questions. Thank you, David.
Same.
Just quickly, the third recommendation talks about updating the treasury management strategy in line with our new arrangements. What I would suggest, at the same time, we look into the issue of ethical investments. Because if we are going to go down that path, it would be encapsulated within the treasury management strategy, which would go to the Strategy Resources and possibly up to full council, is it? I don't think it does, do you?
No.
So I think we have an opportunity. I'm not quite sure, we've probably got it in there already. I'd be amazed if we haven't, but.
I think there is, but I'm not sure how possible that is.
Yeah, so we just need to review it when we do that as well.
Sorry, Chair, can I just clarify, did the officers say we've already invested the money? The money's already gone?
No.
So we cannot have any provision we choose to. If we have a decision maker, yes?
Absolutely.
Any more questions before we continue? Okay, we're on time now, we don't need to.
Two minutes, no, one minute.
Okay, we have two minutes to tell. So we're not going to complete business until ten o'clock. So before we just have an order of 11.5, I propose a meeting continued until 10.30 AM. And I have a second, please. Back here with Counselor. For those who paid, please raise your hands. Forty-four. Those who paid, please raise your hands.
Can I just say that I think this seems to be long now, I think, to be, I believe, a bit allotted time. I think we should consider starting earlier than later.
Any suggestions, please?
I've noticed that, sorry. Sorry, I've got a child here, so I don't want to listen to anyone, is that okay?
So, so let's, we voted to continue, but that, right. So, Counselor.
Yes, we've got the recommendation on papers at the moment. There's still a proposal to amend that, or the Council of Commons' guide on amendment, which would be useful, because I think there is some concern about the legal side of things. Ethics, I think that's actually covered with financial risk anyway. But the point that Dave Black made about on page 58, talking about their responsible investment policy, gives me a certain amount of ease that they will be invested properly. Either could we, could somebody come up with amendment if they feel strongly about it? Or could we perhaps do this for six months and then view the situation, bearing in mind the concerns that you'll express tonight?
Chair, can I, can I, you did put the fourth recommendation, Chair, about, it was always about, and the whole idea of reporting that to the S and R, not to the Investments Group, to the S and R Committee, was to do precisely what we're talking about, to keep a monitoring. And there is an expectation, all of us, that if things are going belly out, we won't wait three months. We'll have an emergency meeting.
So, Chair, answer your question, Counselor.
I'm happy with that.
I, to be honest, I couldn't hear half of what you said.
It maybe was an opportunity for some of you wanted to make an amendment to what we have here, that we look at that now.
Chair, I would propose to help that, in fact, I'll actually second his proposal that I've sent, that also goes back, so part of my proposal will be. Number one, all short, medium and long term investments in this council must have an ethical and environmental dimension to our investments that are positive for our community. Like, really simple, very flexible, and easily interpretable, one way or another. But it allows us to say we're actually consciously trying to make a decision. Some think finances is more important, but that's my first attempt. The core to part of that is that I would be happy for the details of how that works to go to the next strategy resources meeting, to see how it's practical. Because we must really might have to be practical as well as ethical and responsible. Thank you. If someone would like to say.
So, Counselor Anderson, yeah, good first thought. But I'd like to change the word dimension to assessment. I think you have assessment where you can invest. So I think it's important that we assess where we're taking it wrong and hope that has.
I think Counselor Anderson's picked up part of what I was going to say. My issue with the wording was it was a very strong commitment regardless of the practicalities. I think, as Counselor Anderson said, you've got to really look into it and review it. Because if we make a decision that that's what we're going to do, we may not be able to do it properly or we'll lose out. Because none of us know what that actually means. So my proposal, when I suggested, was actually that the Strategy, the Investment Working Party, who manage the treasury management, review it and look at it with the underlying objective to do it as far as is possible and then bring it to Strategy Resources to effectively confirm it. What I'm concerned about is if it's that strong here, it ties the hands, because we don't know what's out there. We don't know what's good or bad, and we may be forced to, because of that decision, to do something that we probably wouldn't want to do. So I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I'm saying the Investments Working Party should review it and assess it and make a recommendation to Strategy Resources.
So, the source, do you recommend this report?
Yes. Yeah, so, you know, the proposal, Counselor, I get to defer it to the.
So, so I will add an additional bullet, which is actually unrelated to this report, but we tend to spend most of our time talking about things that are unrelated, dated to the force of the generalities. An additional agenda reference that says that we instruct or we ask the Investments Working Party to review and assess the council moving to a full ethically based strategy. Unreported back to Strategy Resources.
So that's, so that's a proposal from Counselor Baker.
As an additional reference.
So, so we will still go through this as they are for number five?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Are we ready to go through the recommendations as they are or adjusted?
Chair, let's, thank you.
Are we ready just to look at these recommendations and consider them separately, please? Counselor.
Yeah, just to help officers and probably members who take a bit of time. Normals, rules and regulations that are standing on the state of the vote is something that is voted on, then that becomes part of the substantial motion for those who agree with the objectives and standing orders. I'm quite happy to accept Counselor Baker's proposal that it goes back. And I withdraw my suggestion, but ask that our point be taken back to the working party so that they clearly get some direction. This isn't a nod and a way we can let to pretend we've done it. This is a, members of the councils have decided they want to actually do this, not just pretend. I mean, it's a surprise. It's withdrawn, it's gone.
Right, let's start with these recommendations then, first of all. So the first recommendation is that members consider a proposal to invest some of the two million firstly in our Druffo's account, the short term home market fund with the CCLA Public Sector Deposit Fund. So we need to consider that first recommendation and ask, ask you to vote. So all those. For each recommendation, yes.
I propose it.
Proposed by the Secretary.
Number two, I propose. Number three, I propose. Number four, number five.
Okay, right. Number one, are those who paid, please raise your hands. Seventeen four.
Yeah.
And those who against, please raise your hands.
Against.
And those who wish to stay, please raise your hands.
Abstentions.
The recommendation number one. Recommendation number two. That members consider a proposal to invest the council's 2022-23 estimated green market reserve of £7.5,088. Counts a High Street Bank of time deposit allowance once they mature. Other surplus funds from the 2022-23 group set through the year in a second short term home market fund, the CCLA Public Sector Deposit Fund. We can, we can propose a new seconded. For those in favour of this recommendation, please raise your hands.
That's eighteen.
And those against. And those who should stay.
Sorry, seventeen four, no against, one abstention.
So in that case, that's also approved. Recommendation number three. That should the council approve the proposed investments in two separate short term home market funds with the CCLA's Public Sector Deposit Fund, the Investments Subcommittee will need to update the Treasury Management Strategy in line with the new arrangements and to consider the ethical investments going forward. We have proposed a second number. For those who paid, please raise your hands.
That's eighteen, that's everyone.
Okay, so in that case, that's also approved. So we have number four, to say that there should be reporting back to the Strategy and the Resources Committee to keep for updates on the investments and all that. And we have, we propose a second on that one. So for those who paid, please raise your hands.
That's everyone again.
Okay, so in that case, that's also approved. Item number five was the proposal of the Council of Baker. You want to remind us what it was?
I have listed down to ask the Investments Working Party to review and assess what the council moves for a full ethical based strategy in return of this.
Investment strategy.
Investment strategy.
So ethical and environmental.
Ethical and environmental investment strategy and return to S and R.
The Counselor's latest proposal, Counselor, do you second it? Are those in favour, please raise your hands?
And that is again, everyone.
And we still have the right to sit down to look at, but due to the C C L A evening conference, I propose that we, to generally to now move this forward to, to...
I'll vote for it.
So you could have a post, a post after that, so... And for those who pay, please...
I want to share a quick comment on that proposal. I'm pretty sure that nobody else, nobody would object to that virtual meeting, and we ought to have it in place a little later.
So are you proposing the no stretch of the vote?
Yes.
You are, I will second that.
Let's do it, all those who pay, I'll vote for it.
Seventeen, four.
Yeah, if you could advise me, this probably needs to go to a subcommittee, who are a bit of strategy and resources, but I would like to know what our responsibilities are as a town council if this country goes to war. I'd point out that missiles got within twenty-one miles of NATO country, if they'd gone another twenty, if they'd gone twenty-two miles further, this country would now be at war, and I don't think we should just come, I hope it doesn't happen at all, but I think we should have some idea of what our responsibilities would be if this country went to war.